Tama Teo County Sanitation District. Okay, we call this meeting to order. Welcome. This is a regular meeting for City Council on Monday, July 23rd, 2018. For those of you wishing to address the City Council of any item on the agenda or under public appearances or oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the council chamber and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Now, may we have, everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gingona?
I'm here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Approval of the agenda, please.
Move to approve the agenda?
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I have approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item number one.
Okay. Are there any other items to pull on the consent agenda? Item. Number.
Consent agenda.
Item.
Madam Mayor, on the resolutions, I believe that's item number four. I think it's on the second page.
Item number four. Well, I think I'd like to pull item number two, and you'd also like to pull item number four, the sole purchase-
Yes.
-of Pierce tiller.
Right. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items number one, two, and four.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're on the item number one, adoption of composite summary memorandum of understanding and salary schedule between the City of Daly City and Asme Local 829. Councilmember Christensen, you pulled it, and I'm giving you the floor.
Yeah, I don't think we need an explanation of it. This is a memorandum of understanding and a salary schedule between Daly City and Asme Local 829. With every single union contract this year, I have voted no. Not because I'm not union, not because I don't support you, not because I believe that you don't deserve the money. You do. My greatest fear is that if we continue to pay out more than we have guaranteed revenue coming in, then it places us in a financial crisis, potential bankruptcy and state takeover, and at that point, almost every job in this city would be gone. The only thing that would remain would be police, fire, and water, wastewater, basically essential jobs to keep people alive. I cannot in good conscience risk your jobs three or four years down the road. I just can't do it. And I'm hoping that with some of these new revenues that will be coming in, that I will be able to support more robust raises in the future, but at this point, I'm very afraid for our financial stability and sustainability. So, I'm voting no on that.
Okay, if there's any other comments on the dais from my colleagues, no other comments. So, at this point, may we have roll call, please?
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Christensen?
No.
Mr. Gingona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number two, adopting fringe benefits for specific miscellaneous underrepresented employees. So, seeing this on the agenda, I'd like to actually ask my colleagues if we can move this to a later agenda and getting more information.
Yeah, I don't have any objection to moving it.
Okay.
Do you want to date certain?
Sure, let's put it on the next agenda.
And the reason is?
I need more information. Councilmember Sylvester?
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. I'm in line with tabling this matter for the reason, the way it's written, I have some questions about it, and I'm concerned about the term stacking. Stacking, in this particular case, if somebody's working for Park and Rec and they move to, say, water-
Number two.
If they move over to water and they have their certificates, I would like to find out if they get paid for having a certificate at Park and Rec and also having a specific certificate and getting paid from wastewater. Whereas, on the flip side, if somebody's working at Park and Rec, they cannot get paid for the certificate that they have unless they are actually at Park and Rec only. So, I'm concerned about the stacking aspect of that, and this was a contract, if I'm not mistaken, not this particular fiscal year, but we approved it, or the council approved it, the previous contract. So, I need further specific language to include if stacking is prevalent in this particular case.
Councilmember Sylvester, do you think having it agendized on our next meeting is suffice for the information that you want?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, but I'll defer that to staff to see if that information can be provided prior to next.
That should not be a problem for staff to provide that information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, so, August 13th. So, do we have a motion to move this item, adopting fringe benefits for specific miscellaneous underrepresented employees, to August 13? August 13 at our next council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Okay.
Mr. Gingona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Item number four, authorize the sole source purchase award Pierce tiller tractor only and full Pierce tiller fire ladder truck, and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase contracts on behalf of the city. Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On this particular item. Hello, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. I definitely see the potential discounts and split up between the specific cities involved who will benefit from this, primarily Brisbane, Daly City, and Pacifica. And due to our aging current fleet, I completely understand, and I'm going to vote yes for this. What I'm concerned about is the maintenance on this equipment, because we definitely want it to last as long as possible, and I want to make sure that we have some sort of protocol as to how the equipment is being used. Like, here in this particular case, it's a hook and ladder apparatus. Does fire, hook and ladder respond to medical emergency calls?
Yes.
Medical? For a hook and ladder, a big piece of equipment?
Hi, good evening. Chief Myers.
Yep.
As a result of the closure of Engine 95, the truck is the front-line responding paramedic unit in order for us to keep that station open, so the truck responds, as does ladder trucks across the county, all respond as paramedic ladder trucks.
Chief, does your other hook and ladders also carry water as well?
Engines carry water.
Engines, right.
Engines carry water. Ladder trucks, in this particular case, we're going to adapt to have some water capabilities provided for these ladder trucks, so that there will be some limited amount of water in the event that they pull up to a fire, but it's not the typical type of apparatus that would be called a quint, where you have a pump, a tank, and all of that attached to it. It won't be that. This is just to provide for some limited water capability.
Thank you very much. I'm just concerned about the, basically, lower priority calls to which either AMR response or a smaller piece of equipment can be used in such calls rather than pulling out a big hook and ladder to respond. It just doesn't, it seems to me it'll bring about more maintenance issues and repairs that could have otherwise been, say, if a smaller piece of equipment. And also, I'm concerned about accidents, because in the staff report that I've read, I believe our hook and ladder has been involved in a few accidents, and as a result, the remnants may be manifesting itself as a result of the previous repairs from accidents. I'm just trying to minimize that.
You know, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you about our deployment and how we do all those things, because there's a number of things you brought up there that there's information behind it, how we deploy, and our abilities and inabilities. The accident that occurred was an unfortunate one that probably is not, I've not seen happen in the fire service, where our two vehicles collided at an intersection, a blind intersection. So, that was a pretty rare event, but I think it'd be good if we sat down and let me talk with you about those kinds of capabilities and how we deploy and give you a little better understanding. We did a study some years ago, because I agree with you, intuitively, you see this large apparatus responding, and we literally looked at the cost associated of it, and it was about 68 cents a mile with tires. Our research and looking at ladder trucks is you do get some wear and tear with them, but at the same token, operating them is the best thing, to be operating that equipment. So, the most fire departments, a lot of fire departments all around us, all run ladder trucks for all kinds of emergencies, but let's get together and talk.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Move to approve the item?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
I voted positively for the purchase of the last tiller truck, and I am thrilled to vote yes on this one.
Mr. Gingona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Moving on to our public hearings, item number six, the extension of urgency ordinance, adopting a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of all commercial cannabis land uses, business operations, and all commercial cannabis cultivation. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This item is before the City Council to extend the existing urgency ordinance, extending the temporary moratorium for all commercial cannabis businesses. As you are aware, on December 11, 2017, the City Council did establish an initial moratorium to ban all commercial cannabis businesses pending research and pending legislations and regulations adopted by the council. On January 22nd, the council extended that moratorium, and it is set to expire on July 25th, 2018. Given that the council will need additional time to consider regulations, adopting legislation, and also, we do have a pending ballot measure, the staff does recommend that the City Council extend a moratorium to the maximum allowed under the Constitution, which is two years allowed by state, in order to allow time to implement legislation. If we are to extend the moratorium, it would expire on December 11, 2019. This recommendation is to provide public noticing for proposed legislation and allow the council to review regulations. If the council were to find a regulation or legislation to be within line with their approval, the City Council could repeal the interim ordinance at any time prior to the expiration date. I just wanted to allow enough time for you to review it. This is a recommendation. It does need to be approved by four fifths of the vote of the entire City Council. The council, the city staff request that City Council waive the reading and adopt it as an urgency ordinance and allow the city attorney to read by title only. I am available here to have any questions of the mayor, desired by the mayor, or City Council.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Zimmerman? Seeing none at this point, may we have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, do we have any cards on this item? Seeing none?
Close the hearing?
Second.
There is? Oh, on item number six. Oh, thank you.
Oh, that is, I don't know. I can see that for real.
Mr. Tony Williams? Sorry, apologize for that. Thank you for being here.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tony Williams, and my wife and I own Seaweed Holistics, a health and wellness business that specializes in CBD and cannabis products. Six years ago, I started having seizures and was diagnosed with late onset epilepsy. Shortly after that, I started reading a lot about how people were using cannabis to help manage their seizures. I decided to go ahead and give it a try. Now, my only problem after that was finding a place to get my medicine from. There were several dispensaries in my area, but all of them were rather dark, seedy, and pretty sketchy at best. So, in 2016, my wife and I decided to start our own collective. We wanted to create a place that people could come and get quality products, information, and services, a place that was warm, inviting, and a place that a 70-year-old woman would feel comfortable in coming to. I personally want to invite each and every one of you to Rockaway Beach in Pacifica to visit what me and my wife have built. We think it's an excellent example of what the future of the cannabis industry is going to, and it's actually been a fantastic business model and been welcomed very, very well in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Do you have a website?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
SeaweedHolistics.com.
And I noticed you looked straight at me when you said 70-year-old woman.
I like that.
And by the size of the dais, he's looking at me.
I genuinely hope that you all would definitely come out and see the place firsthand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
We have to close.
Oh, a motion for the city attorney to read by title only.
Motion?
Yes. Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is an extension of the Urgency Interim Ordinance Number 1417, continuing a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of all commercial cannabis land uses, business operations, and cultivation. I would like to have a motion for adopt the ordinance. By roll call, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number seven, resolution to authorize placement of proposed increase to business license tax ordinance on the ballot for November 6, 2018 election. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This item is a continuance from the July 9 regular meeting to authorize the staff to place the business license tax ordinance on the November 6, 2018 election. By way of background, since the time that the City Council continued this on July 9, the city staff has hired within a week FM3 and Independent Polling Group and Professional Services of Lou Edwards Group to assist the city in its proposed ballot measures. The revised documents that is presented before you in the resolution reflects the community input. At this time, the city manager will present a very general overview of the polling results.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So, we were lucky enough to have FM3, very renowned consultant for polling for Daly City. There was a survey of registered voters that took place last week. They were able to get a hold of 462 voters and get some key findings regarding what residents feel about these three ballot measures. So, essentially, the voters who were polled appeared to understand the importance of additional funding for various local services, so that was a good thing. More than 70% of residents polled would support each of the three potential ballot measures, including the TOT increase, the business license tax increase, and the excise tax on cannabis. And lastly, the main focus, an important point, was that maintaining public safety services, keeping streets and public areas clean and safe, and maintaining the city's long-term financial stability were high priorities for these residents that were polled.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
Do you know the breakdown of the polls that was conducted?
I do. So, for the assessment of Daly City's need for funding, there was 72% said that there was a great or some need. For the assessments of the connection between city services and property values, 77% believed that their property values were connected to the services that the city provided. And of the maintaining public safety services, keeping streets and public areas clean and safe, and maintaining the city's long-term financial stability, the survey asked residents to identify the importance, and 92% believed that it was extremely or very important to, for these priorities to be considered in relation to the ballot measures.
Do you know if that included public safety?
Yes. Maintaining, yes. So, maintaining public safety, which would include police and fire, keeping streets and public areas clean and safe, and maintaining the city's long-term financial stability, were high priorities for residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam interim city manager, thank you for moving forward and conducting a poll as we move forward. As I always believe in full and complete transparency to our constituents, is it a possibility that we can release those poll results online in social media channels so that our constituents-
I'm getting the nod from the city attorney that we can, in fact, publish those, yes.
Great. And also, as we will see from the upcoming ordinances that, well, ballot propositions that's coming up, all of them point to public safety. And I want to make sure that, you know, if this does and the voters do approve it, that those funds are set aside for public safety as per-
That's not what it says.
I don't want to basically mislead any of the voters, and if we take the totality of each one of them, I had made a concern that I feel that that's still not enough, but you can only go so far in getting taxes from the people, but public safety is definitely of paramount importance, and I would hope that if this does and if it is passed by the voters, that we make sure that the bulk of it, mostly all of it, go to public safety. I'm not looking for deferred maintenance in buildings and, you know, because I have a figure going to the general fund, but public safety is what I'm looking for.
And I believe that if these do pass, we would have further discussion with council about where those funds go.
Gotcha.
Right.
Councilmember Christensen?
I'm looking at the actual language in the ballot measure. Is that what you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
It's on page three? That it lists a variety, and there were more, there were many things that were above 50%, and so, maybe you could share with us everything that was above 50% of, on the priorities list? Because, as I recall, there were more. You know, the long list of things that people were asked to prioritize.
So, I have the summary with me right now. I don't have the long list, but I can share, absolutely share that with council. I don't have it as well.
Right, because I know that people definitely want financial stability, they want homelessness to be addressed.
Right.
But the top priority was mentioned was public safety.
Right, and so that it means that the money from this would be then for the council to decide how much, when, and for specifically what purposes?
That's correct, yes. It would come at a later date, that if these were to pass, the council would-
And you all vote us here, so you need to make sure we know your priorities.
Absolutely.
Of course. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, so, I'd like to continue, so we can take a look at the language. As you are aware, by way of background, this came before the council, June 25th and July 9th. The proposal is to increase business license tax from the existing rate by 10%, and the anticipated amount generated is $420,000. The resolution, the draft resolution, is what authorizes the ballot measure, so I wanted to point out several actions and very tight deadlines. August 10th, after the vote of the council, the resolution is placed and sent to the city clerk on the ballot for November 6. It also requests that the election be consolidated with the general election with the county and that we are to commit to the county expenses as well. August 14th, the resolution authorized the city council ballot argument to be submitted to the city clerk. August 20th, the city clerk is to submit the ordinance to the city attorney to present the impartial city attorney analysis before the voters. It does authorize the city council to, in the event that there is opposition, to file a rebuttal, but that is completely discretionary. It is just an authorization. It is not mandatory in any way. Just thought it'd give you the most discretion if needed. This is the most important part of the ballot measure. As you will see, I had drafted this language for the council's consideration in response to the community priorities and polling. Since the drafting of the resolution, there are some, I point here, more grammatical changes, so it's a little bit different, just for it to read a little bit more clearer and a little bit more of an active voice. This is actually 75 words, which is the absolute limit. I might be a little bit less. It might be 70 if I count the Daly Cities, but it is 75 words. You can read it, or I can read it as well, as however you, the pleasure of the council, you want me to read it, okay? This is a Daly City Public Safety Vital City Service Protection Measure. This is to maintain police-fire protection, paramedics, 911 emergency response, address homelessness, clean repair streets and public areas- homelessness, clean repair streets and public areas, retain and attract job businesses, maintain Daily City financial stability and general services. Shall the ordinance be adopted, increasing the city business license tax by up 2.05% with a minimum of $110 per business, providing $420,000 annually until ended by voters, requiring independent audits oversight and all funds only for Daily City. I point out that all funds only for Daily City, because the polling did have favored highly that the money stay in Daily City and not be taken by the state of California. So, we tried to craft that as succinctly as we could in 75 words.
Thank you very much. I think from last time, using the consultant and what they've been able to provide us with information, especially around ensuring it stays in Daily City, is huge. If our residents want to see that, then it's stated there. And also, the 110 per business is very clear versus the percentages that we had prior. So, I think this is much better language. At this point, does my colleagues have any other comments? Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I'm taking the role of a businessperson. So, if I run a business, I pay a minimum of $110 per year. This increase is a half of 1%. So, if I'm paying 110, what would I be paying now as a result if this passes?
Depends on what your gross...
I didn't get to that point yet. Right now, I'm paying 110. How much will I, if everything is being the same?
Then 115.
115, okay.
It would be 110, because it's currently $100.
It's now 110.
Now, it's 110.
Yes.
Now, based upon gross receipts, this applies to folks under 100,000 per year. So, if they make less than 100,000, the maximum they will have to pay is 110.
That is correct.
That's correct.
If they make over 100,000, say 101,000, how much would that be? Would that be a half of a percent of the amount over, or is it the whole total amount?
So, it would be anything calculated based on the total gross received. So, that means under the 10% increase, the gross received will be multiplied by 0.11%. Then, that will be the new dollar amount.
Okay, so, can we have an example of, if it's 110,000, what they were paying and what they would be paying now?
So, it would be, it would be $110 plus whatever above. It's 10% above.
Okay. Yeah, what's the dollar amount?
He's saying it's $110, so it's, so it's at $110,000?
Yes.
Is that what you're making?
Right.
So, whatever's over 100,000 is 10% of it.
Yes.
So, that's, he wants that number.
So, they would go from 110 to...
So, it would be like, what, 111, right?
Well, I just want to, yeah.
I think 111, isn't it?
I do, here.
110, 1% of 10,000?
It's 1/11th, 1/100th of 1%. That's what it is.
It's just a little bitty money.
It's not that much.
No.
Yeah, it's a little itty-bitty money, but, you know, folks will probably want to know, and I'm just trying to help them understand. Like the gentleman earlier for the marijuana business, if you're over 100,000, I'm just wondering, you know, what would be the cost? I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of a businessperson, because the businessperson would probably...
Apparently, Mike, I have a defective calculator, apparently, so...
So, what would be 110,000 times?
110,000 times 0.11% would be that number.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's do it.
Anybody in the audience know the answer, quick? Find my calculator.
Right, you want to go get it? Okay. Mr. Chu is going to get his magic calculator.
I'm sorry about that, but, you know, I just want to bring complete transparency for our business owners out there. Okay, so, I got a 100, 110, one, two, three. And what did he say the rate would be?
011.
011%.
011.
It's $12.
It's $12.
Right.
$12 and 10 cents.
Right, because you're paying what is above the 100,000 at 011.
So...
So, you pay 110, everyone pays that, plus...
$2.10, thank you.
There you go.
And they will be able to find that in their sofa.
And that's true.
Or, I'll even contribute it. The $2.10, the business is really in trouble.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
And when we do the, excuse me, when we do the pamphlets, the readers that do go out, we will provide examples, yes, yes.
The public education piece will...
Very.
We'll have the examples, very clear.
We'll have all the examples quite clearly.
We have it, it's okay, thank you.
It was $2.
$2.10, sir.
So... We already figured it out?
We figured it out.
We're good.
Thank you so much.
We all need that calculator.
It must be your very special one.
Next time, we've had that since high school.
Thank you very much. And I think one, also, one thing to note is that when we did have the study last time, we have not increased this for a very long time, which was since 1995, if correctly.
Actually, it was 2004, when we had an amendment, yes.
But, still, that is a way, a while ago.
And the public education pieces will also indicate the last time we had an amendment on the business license tax.
Exactly. So, when was, just for clarification purposes, so, last time was 2004. What was it prior to that?
I don't know what we increased it from, from 2004.
Did we, was it a while ago?
It's 2000, 1991.
1991. So, 1991, then 2004, and now. So, as you can see, we've been very understanding and, you know, with our businesses, and we just need to make sure we have enough revenue to provide our services. So, yeah, it's important. Thank you. Before moving on, is there any more questions, or else I'm going to roll open the hearing? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
No public hearing needed.
Oh, no public hearing, okay. So, just, we have a public comment from Ms. Pamela Giavani.
Hi, good evening, council. Vice Mayor, mayor. I'm just curious, when it said on the 911 emergency response, considering that our 911 is now in the county, so how is the money going to be allocated to, for that particular, on the ballot messaging? Because when people might, just devil's advocate, like the councilmembers Sylvester says, trying to play the person out in the community, when they say, oh, but our 911 now is in the county, so where would that money go to make sure that we have a 911 emergency response?
So, this is, this is general fund money, which is unrestricted general fund revenue. So, essentially, because this is a general tax, we can't specifically allocate it in the ballot measure, but this goes before the council when the money is received as to how the money will be allocated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we pay for that 911 service. Comes out of city money.
Comes out of general.
And the fire engines and the EMTs and the paramedics that respond to those are 911 responses as well.
Basically, general, it goes to the general fund, which goes to those items that were listed, but thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other cards, do I have a motion to adopt?
The recommendation, if I may, through the mayor, is to adopt the resolution with the amendments as noted, the red line amendments.
Someone, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, resolution to authorize the placement of the proposed increase to transit occupancy tax, TOT ordinance on the ballot for November 6, 2018 election, and also, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This item also came before the City Council on June 25, 2018, and also on July 9, 2018. It was continued from the last meeting. To further look at the language, again, we did have the help of the consultants in revising the ballot language. The ballot measure to increase TOT, also known as hotel guest tax, will be from 10% to 12% in 2019 and up to 13% in 2020. The resolution, as provided to the council, does indicate several of the action items that I had mentioned in the previous ballot measure. We did title it Hotel Guest Tax, based on the recommendation of the consultant, as TOT seems to be a little bit something that most of the residents weren't too familiar with, but Hotel Guest Tax did get a lot of responses. It does request that we consolidate the election with the general election. We will be submitting a single ballot argument in favor of the TOT for the council, and the city attorney will also submit its analysis by August 20 and a discretionary rebuttal. The language here, per the ballot measure, is also 75 words, and I, again, recrafted it, just sort of grammatical changes from the language that was presented in your staff report to just give it a little bit more of an active voice and also clean it up. We were kind of going as quickly as we could to get this to the council. So, I will read it. It is the Daily City Hotel Tax, Guest Tax Local Services Protection Measure. The question is spelled as to maintain senior, youth, after-school, park, recreational, library, disaster preparedness programs, school safety officers, rapid response to burglaries, address homelessness, improve traffic safety, maintain financial stability, and other general services. Shall an ordinance be adopted, increasing the city's transit occupancy hotel tax by up to 3% paid by hotel motel guests, providing approximately 300,000 annually until ended by the voters, requiring independent audits, oversight, all funds only for Daily City?
Thank you very much. I also noticed the Daily City portion that reminds our residents it'll be for our services only. I think one question that we've had, and moving forward, you've mentioned that after this is passed, hopefully it does get passed, we can create an amendment to include any vacation rentals or any Airbnbs, because, okay, thank you. Any other? Councilmember Sylvester?
I just have a question. Do we want a comma after the word oversight in the last sentence?
Wait, let me see.
Or the last?
Requiring independent over...
So, it says requiring independent audits, oversight, comma, all funds only for Daily City? I'm not sure.
Sure, we could do that.
Okay, does that make, I don't know.
Can you read it, please?
Let's see. Require, okay, providing approximately 300,000 annually until ended by voters, requiring independent audits, oversight, all funds only for Daily City.
There's like a word missing, maybe, like "and"?
And oversight of funds?
I'll have to check if that gives me...
I don't think you can put another word in there.
But, we might, because Daily City is one word.
Oversight.
But, I think you're at 75 words, aren't you?
See what we said in the last one?
There was no comma.
Well, it's...
If we do punctuation...
It's actually one phrase to, it's oversight, all funds only for Daily City.
If it's meant to, it's oversight, making sure that all the funds are only perfect.
Only for Daily City, so it's not independent of all funds.
Yeah.
It's oversight of the all funds.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense to me now that you clarified, yeah.
Councilmember Sylvester?
How, using it, remember how complex it was? But, you just say by up to 3%. That all those sentences that we had before, when we talked about this in one year, and then we'll raise it in another year, and blah, blah, blah.
It's less complicated.
Fits beautifully here, thank you.
I'm looking at lines three and four. I'm just wondering if there's a nexus that we had to put rapid response to burglaries. You know, the police covers various functions other than just burglaries and school safety officers, homelessness. I'm thinking something to the effect of, I mean, there's domestic violence, there's assault in progress, and we put down burglaries. I'm just wondering if, to increase rapid response to all types of crime, whether personal or property. I, I'm just wondering why we had burglaries.
Okay, this is in response to the polling, and the burglaries came up as one of the high...
I'm sorry?
This was in response to the polling questions. And the, so you'll see that it does have a different flavor from the previous one. And so, just by way of basically input from our consultants, you have three ballot measures on here, so you don't want to have voter fatigue where everything looks the same.
And it's repetitive.
So, essentially, these are input from the residents and the voters. These were concerns, and they rated them, and these were the high, on the high end of rating. 911 responses was actually on the high level. Business license is going to generate a whole lot more, so obviously, if you were looking at the voting, you would like that to pass. You don't want voters to... They were asked, if you had all three measures, would you vote for all three of them? Most of the people said yes, and some people said, I like this one better than the other one. So, you just didn't want that, so that's why it's crafted in the way.
Wow, that is outstanding. That's why if we can put that poll up for the constituents, and, okay, yeah, they're listening.
They're listening.
Yes, thank you.
Do you know if they were talking about car burg, home burglaries, car burglaries?
They've just said the word burglaries and robberies, and this is what came up.
I know if you look at next door, there's a lot of people complaining about people taking packages off your porch and grabbing things out of your car.
And that came up a lot as well. Snatch and grab type.
But, that's not a burglary.
It's not.
Well, to the public, they think it is.
The opportunistic crime.
Interesting.
Okay, if there are no other questions at this point, I, okay?
I know that you had responded to my inquiry about the hotels, the updates. Can you share a little bit with the public about that, what's going on with the hotels?
I think we have a committee meeting that will be updating. We had a committee meeting on that, and we will have, be reporting that as well, unless you need an update at this point.
No, no, it's good. Do it when you, when you want to, when you can.
So, will that be at the committee report, and staff will be providing?
Right, we have a committee report at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. So, seeing none, there are no cards for this, may I have a motion to adopt?
Again, through the mayor to adopt with the edits as noted.
With the edits.
Someone, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. All right. Moving on to item number nine, resolution to authorize the cannabis marijuana business license tax proposed ordinance on the ballot for November 6, 2018 election. Ms. Zimmerman?
Again, we do have another ballot measure that came before the council on July 9, 2018. The council directed staff to prepare the necessary legislation to place the measure on the November 6, 2018 ballot measures. The ballot measure proposal is an excise tax, which would only be taxed on marijuana and cannabis businesses. Attached to your staff report is a resolution placing the cannabis business license tax on the ballot, and attached to that is Exhibit A, which is also the ordinance to the cannabis license tax ordinance. To give you a little bit of background, the ordinance is written in such a way that allows the most discretion for the city council in the event that the council adopts regulations and legislations regulating the cannabis businesses, then the... regulations and legislations regulating the cannabis businesses, then the business tax will come into effect. The council will have the opportunity and discretion to tax businesses, either medical or recreational, at the pleasure of the council, up to 10%. So the legislation is crafted in such a way that will allow that discretion to the city council. Again, as noted, we have several action items on the resolution. I noted those dates in the previous discussions where we have the specific dates. The most important being is the ballot measure language. And I'll read it. So the ballot measure language is the Daly City Cannabis Marijuana Business Tax Measure. The question is, shall an ordinance be adopted by the city to establish up to a 10% tax on the gross receipts of all cannabis marijuana businesses in Daly City, if any? Cannabis marijuana businesses are allowed in the city in the future, providing approximately $450,000 annually for general public services until ended by voters, requiring audits, oversight, all funds only for Daly City. This is about 65 words, and it is our recommendation that the council approve the resolution with this adjusted language.
I do have a question. I know we went to the polling. Was this also on the polling?
Yes, it was. And it was, you have, Ms. Malby probably has the numbers, but my understanding, it was highly favorable that everybody wanted to tax cannabis and marijuana. The language that came out is everybody refers to it as the marijuana business, so I did change that from the previous, not cannabis business, so it says cannabis slash marijuana business. We noted the approximate amount of $450,000 simply because it's very difficult to estimate. It's required by law, we have to give a good faith estimate, but it's very difficult to estimate what that number is, knowing that we don't have businesses that have been established. So the concern from having three ballot measures is that you have a number that might look too high, which not, might not necessarily be accurate, and voters may vote that instead of the other measures. So it is crafted in a way that anticipating that there are three measures on the ballot.
This polling had 75% in favor.
Thank you.
And we also had a pretty high favorability in allowing the businesses as well.
What was their percentage?
It's about 75%.
It was 75%.
For allowing the businesses, okay. Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as a reminder, hopefully our constituents won't get confused, as there are different types of marijuana, recreational, and medical. And that's not to say that we will charge 10%. We, as a council, will decide as to what percentage we will charge if it's for medical use, maybe 2%, 3%, but this gives us the.
Flexibility.
The parameters to work in between.
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, on this one, I noticed there is a comma, so maybe.
I know, I saw that. I might add the comma, just because it doesn't do anything, but it makes more sense, you're right.
See, you already convinced me I'm removing it.
Right.
I say, do whatever you decide. Just be consistent.
Yeah.
Is the comma considered a word?
No, it's not.
No.
It's not.
The slash marks aren't a word either.
The slash marks aren't a word either. They make it one word. It's like a title.
At this point, if there are no other comments, or I see no cards for this item, may I have, with adoption of the resolution with, oh, there's no amendments on here, by, roll call. Do I have a motion to authorize the cannabis marijuana business license tax proposed ordinance on the ballot for November 6, 2018?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the staff working on all of the ballot work, getting ahold of the consultant expeditiously, and then also having this ready, so thank you very much. Moving on to item number 10. Use permit, UPR-5-18-13470, indoor dog boarding facility at 6298 Mission Street. Mr., Ms., wait, oh, no, that's not.
We have a couple, we have a couple vacations in the planning division, so you guys will have to deal with me this evening. So hopefully, I can provide as much information as the project planners.
Ms. Motherhead.
Thank you. Oh, I forgot my notes.
You can have a seat until we call you. It might be a while until their presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This will be the first item I'll be presenting to you this evening. This is a use permit application for a dog boarding facility going by the name of Paw's Pet and Play at 6298 Mission Street. This building probably looks quite familiar. It's an iconic building on Mission Street. This is, was formerly the St. Vincent de Paul Secondhand Store, and then prior to that, it was a bank. Just briefly on the project overview, the intent is to use the existing retail building as an indoor dog boarding facility. Again, as I mentioned, the previous uses of the building. The property is a triangular piece of property that sort of sits at the intersection of Mission Street and San Jose Avenue. And this is an aerial of the shot, of the site. It's just this building right here. This is the site plan. The building pretty much takes up the entire site. And this is the main level floor plan. The space is 3,500 square feet on the main level. The surface will be covered, and I'm going to show you some interior photos in a minute, but the interior surface would be covered with a high-quality permeable and washable artificial turf that would be placed over the building's floor drain system. The floor drains do drain to the sewer and not to the storm drain, and so any animal waste could permeate through the turf surface into the floor drains. The proposal is to also include a small retail portion at the front entrance of the building, about 400 square feet of retail use. The majority of customers will bring their dogs in for morning or afternoon open play sessions. The facility will also offer overnight boarding, which would take place in the open play areas. Anybody bringing their dogs in for overnight care would be required to bring them in at 2:00 PM so that they have time to play, burn off their energy, and get sort of acquainted with the facility. This is an interior shot of the space. As you can see, there's the turf. This is the permeable turf that has been installed in the location. And again, it's only liquid waste that would go through the turf. Solid waste would be picked up by, by the attendants. And here's an additional turf area as well. So obviously, when staff is reviewing it, there is a series of conditions that were considered to make the use more compatible with the neighborhood and just an overall good business model. Staff suggested that the facility be staffed anytime there are dogs present, so whether it's the daytime care or the overnight boarding, sorry.
No, I just wanted.
Yeah.
Is anybody hearing this incredibly?
Yes.
It's some sort of feedback?
It's gone now.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so staff recommended staffing whenever dogs are present. Additionally, the owner was requesting to have 50, up to 50 dogs between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and 20 dogs in the hours between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. However, staff, as just sort of a way to test it all out, suggested a lower amount, so 40 dogs during the daytime hours, and 15 dogs for boarding overnight. If there are not more than three complaints within six months, staff would say that it's okay to increase the capacity. Also, our water, wastewater department did review it, and of course, they don't want any animal waste to go into the storm drain system. Again, the floor drains in the building do connect to the sanitary sewer, so that's not an issue. And the business will not be walking dogs outside, so there won't be any dogs walking around as part of the business, other than the dogs coming in. All trash and refuse would be, need to stored indoors until the day of trash collection. And of course, the applicant would need to maintain that pervious artificial turf. So in the event that it starts to fail, or, you know, has other issues, it would need to be replaced. Our planning commission was very diligent in their review, and they've also suggested some conditions of approval that I believe the applicant is amenable to. They suggested, actually, that the business owner look at increasing refuse collection, so to work directly with Republic Services to determine what that good number would be to make sure that, you know, it doesn't, odors don't develop with the solid waste indoors. There is a Senate Bill 945 that has specific provisions for animal care and safety, and so, of course, as state law, we are requiring the applicant to comply with that. And also because there are living creatures in the building, probably 24 hours a day, we are requiring, or suggesting that a hardwired fire alarm system be installed. This would mean that if the alarm goes off, a notice goes directly to the fire department. I believe the applicant, at the time of planning commission meeting, was in the process of installing, so I suppose he could provide an update of this evening.
I just have a question. Fire alarm system. Is it a smoke detection system? Is it a heat activating system? How does it know there's a fire? Or does the person pick the thing and say, yo, there's a fire?
That's actually a very good question. I don't know specifically. I imagine there are smoke. Okay, there would be smoke detectors in there, so I imagine smoke for sure. I don't know about heat, though. Obviously, being in fill in an existing building, this is exempt from SEQA. And finally, the planning commission, after their review, is recommending that the city council adopt the findings from the environmental assessment and approve the use permit with the conditions outlined in your staff report. That concludes my presentation, but the applicant is here this evening. If there's any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Part of the staff report includes information about parking, to which the applicant tried to obtain parking, and the previous parking used by St. Vincent de Paul is no longer available. So subsequently, we're just going to rely on available parking in the street. Is there any way we can address that?
Well, the parcel that provided the parking on the previous use is owned by a different owner, so we can't compel a private property owner to require parking for something that's not occurring on their property. So that's basically as far as we could go with that. It is a nonconforming building that never did provide parking on its own parcel, so it has had to rely on street parking as well.
Well, my concern is if we ever approve a use permit, we as a city should do everything that we can so that business can be, can thrive. Having no parking, I can't see how we're offering the opportunity for this business to thrive, because this would be one of the few dog grooming areas that we would have, and actually, I'm looking forward to it. But at the same time, I would like the business to thrive, and this is really going to make it difficult. If I'm not mistaken, at top of the hill, Daly City, San Francisco Muni buses make U-turns there, and if folks dropping off their dogs cannot find any parking, what will they do? They will double park. And I think that will cause issues that need to be mitigated. You made mention about three complaints. I would think the complaints range on the noise aspect of dogs and animals being there, the odors, but nothing about parking or causing traffic problems.
Isn't there a parking lot, a city parking lot on Bepler, right across the street?
Correct.
And I actually use that parking lot on a regular basis. Then up around the corner, there's another parking lot on Mission Circle, and then right there on Hillcrest, there's a number of kind of angled-in parking spots that, I've never been there, that I couldn't find a spot, and I up there a lot.
I, thank you for that.
And I would assume that the owner would tell people about those specialty spots.
Gotcha. I'm good.
If I may, many of the customers will probably be somewhat regular, so after a couple visits, I think they'll become used to that.
Thank you.
The routine.
Vice Mayor?
Is there a green zone on Mission or San Jose that could help him out to have temporary drop-offs for? I'm assuming this is a lot of dropping off the dog, picking up the dog, not really staying.
Okay. So there are no green zones, but along San Jose side, there actually are no residences outside, and it's the back of Dollar Tree, so that whole sidewalk, no one ever parks there. So I go to the, I mean, I go there a lot just to work on it. So that's always free. There's about seven spaces that are metered and one unmetered spot there, so I don't think parking would be much of an issue. Across the street where the parking lot is on San Jose side, there's also three more metered spots where there are no other businesses that use. And then, obviously, the business across, directly across the street is in Iron Works, that they have their own parking lot and things like that.
Okay.
But there are no green zones. Mission side also has their own parking, so I don't think parking would be much of an issue here.
So looking at kind of the parking landscape at the moment, you've assessed it, you know? You've assessed it yourself?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And see, it's viable with 40 dogs, or?
I would think so, because most of our businesses pick up drop-offs, so I don't expect clients to spend more than five minutes, the human clients at least, in my building. It's mostly, you know. We'll take the dogs, and then the retail's only for convenience, so I don't expect them to stay too long.
And what's nice about that is when you're looking at this shot, there are no homes close by.
Exactly. There are no direct neighbors, so we're not touching them.
And so the businesses, the fire station, businesses, I don't know, the museum's not too far away. I volunteer at a lot, so, yeah, if you're going to have a dog place in a highly urbanized area like this.
There's no more better location, right?
I, yeah, I'd be hard pressed to find one.
Okay. Seeing any, no other questions?
I have a question for him about the fire thing. So how does your fire alarm system work?
So it's, basically, the law requires us to have a monitored alarm, so that when something is detected, no one has to call 911, and it's immediately.
Right.
It's immediately, you know, called for us.
But what is it that it's detecting what?
It's smoke and CO2.
Okay, both. So if there's smoke, it calls the fire department immediately?
Exactly.
And don't be burning any candles, or making toast, because it'll set your alarms off. Yeah, okay. I want to make sure those puppies are safe.
Yeah, me too.
And your employees as well.
All right. Councilmember Sylvester?
Just something minor. Slide number four. It's the map, yeah, right there, Mission, yeah, Mission Street is spelt wrong.
Oh.
Thank you.
Just so it's grammatical.
I think that was there before us.
Vice Mayor?
Let me ask you about your, your business. So I have often wondered, and, because I use dog hotel stays all the time, and I wonder about, so, so when, when, there's a period of time, obviously, at night where no one is attending to, to the dogs, is that right? Or do you, or do you monitor them? How do you?
So for our type of business, it's a cage-free boarding area, so they're not going to be sitting in cages overnight. They're going to be all sleeping together, and we do have staff overnight. So there will be someone sleeping with them if they're sleeping, or there are 24 hours a day.
Oh, so there's someone always there?
Yes, they're always going to be on constant watch, because they're not caged. So if, you know, something does happen while, you know, in the middle of the night, someone will be there to stop it or help them or whatever it may be.
So they're, so they're existing with each other, they're?
Yes, yes. So, but I think it wasn't really mentioned, all the dogs are pre-screened, so it's not going to be like, you know, we don't take every type of dog, and it's not going to be based on breed or anything, it's really based on their behavior. So they have to be able to cohabitate with each other, which most dogs normally do.
I'm assuming that all dogs will be spayed and neutered?
Yes, spayed, neutered, vaccines, etc.
That can cause a lot of trouble right there.
So is this a model that you've had prior?
This is a model that a lot of them use. This is my first business of my own like this, but we followed a lot of all the really popular ones throughout California. This is kind of the model that they follow.
This model's very popular in Great Britain as well.
If I may, and I'll conclude with this. Again, we want to see new businesses here in our city, and at the same time, we want those businesses to succeed and thrive. I enjoy your being optimistic, because I was very concerned about the parking, and Madame Christensen and Ms. Tatum, when I saw the overview, Matt, I forgot about the diagonal parking on Mission Street, which is just right across. And you being optimistic, saying, you know, I think it can work, okay, well, that's good. We were looking out on your behalf as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, there are no, I think, no public comment on this. Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
I guess I should say bow wow, huh? Yes.
Mr. Gengona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Wolf, Wolf, yes.
Ms. Magallo?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and good luck with your business.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 11, use permit, UPR-5-18-13467. New vehicle storage at Cerimani Shopping Center Parking Garage. They're on vacation.
It's popular vacation time.
Ms. Motherhead.
This, as you have already introduced, this is a use permit application for new vehicle storage in the new parking garage at Cerimani Shopping Center. Okay, I will use this. As you are all probably very well aware, there is a new parking garage at Cerimani Shopping Center. This was completed, I believe, last year. This structure was built to satisfy both the existing retail uses, but also the future phases of retail development and hotel development at the shopping center. However, that second phase of development hasn't quite started yet, so there is an excess of 1,206 parking spaces. So in the meantime, the owners of Cerimani Shopping Center have looked to utilize the levels of the parking structure that are currently not really being used by retail customers for the purposes of storing new vehicles for local car dealerships. The proposal includes using the existing parking structure for the storage of 670 vehicles in the upper three levels of the five-level parking structure. City Toyota would occupy most of the third level of the garage with 354 vehicles. Most of the fourth floor would be occupied by Daily City Mitsubishi and Cerimani Nissan with 70 spaces and 190 spaces respectively. And then the fifth, or the top level of the structure, would be occupied by Nissan with 112 spaces. Not a part of this proposal, but just for your information, Tesla will be installing a charging facility with 40 spaces, but that does not require a use permit. And that is because those spaces will not be only for Tesla vehicles. So while a Tesla vehicle could charge there, any customers of Cerimani could choose to shop, to park there, which is why Tesla wanted the fifth floor, because they wanted the spaces that nobody would want to use, so that they would essentially, by a practical matter, be specifically for Tesla. But any customer could actually park in those spaces. I think you're familiar with the parking garage, but the parking garage is actually located over here, but this is the northern end of the Cerimani Shopping Center with the Firestone and the Denny's. This is Calan Boulevard with the entrance to Cerimani in the foreground here on the left. So this is how vehicles would enter. If they were going directly to the parking garage, this would probably be the driveway of choice. It is important to note that the owners of Cerimani Regency are not permitting those big trucks with the vehicles on them as a means to bring the vehicles. So the vehicles are actually being driven, oh, one by one. And then they're basically there for storage, so as a customer would like to purchase one, then they come out of the garage. So it's not 340 cars each day moving in and out. So this is a plan for the third floor. You can see it's mostly occupied by City Toyota. We have the fourth floor planned, occupied by Mitsubishi and Nissan. And finally, the fifth floor with Nissan, and then just for information, showing where the Tesla stalls would be. And it's also important to note that the fifth floor is actually open to the air as well. This is the first floor, so you can see that the parking spaces here are being used by customers of the shopping center. But when you go to the second floor,
It's real empty real quick.
It's a little less popular, but it's available. So the second floor is available for customers of the shopping center. So this would most likely get used in an extremely busy time.
Holidays.
And we have the third floor with Toyota and the fourth floor with Mitsubishi and Nissan. And finally, the open-air fifth floor. Some of the conditions that staff recommended that the planning commission concurred with were that this is a temporary use permit. Obviously, as the future phases of retail development occur, the need for the parking stalls in the parking garage will be required. So as commercial development happens, then some of the vehicles available for, for the car dealerships will actually decrease. So we applied a five-year duration just so that we could keep monitoring that. It's our understanding that Regency is actually very eager to move forward with their plans for development. This is sort of an interim use, so that they can make use of the parking garage in the, in the meantime. Obviously, we don't want to see the city streets used to unload or store the vehicles, so that is strictly prohibited. Use of any area other than the parking structure to store vehicles is also prohibited. So if they were to try to lease other of the surface parking stalls, that would not be permitted as part of this use permit. And of course, no repair of the vehicles in the parking garage. This also is exempt from SEQA. And finally, the planning commission, after their review, is recommending adoption of the findings of affirmation of the environmental assessment and approval of the use permit subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and we do have representation from the shopping center to answer any questions you may have.
I, thank you very much. I do have a question for staff. With the conditional use permit, what does that, what does that equate to? Like what, I mean?
So, the shopping center, when it went through its recent entitlements, created a planned development zone, so there was zoning specific to the shopping center.
And this, was this part of it?
Well, the planned development didn't account for new vehicle storage. And so the planned development chapter in the municipal code says that if a use is not clearly identified as part of a planned development, that a use permit could be required. So being that this wasn't an identified use, staff believes that the use permit process was the appropriate measure in this case.
Any questions?
No.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Go ahead, Madam Christensen, because I got five questions.
Oh, just, just a comment. When they were building this parking structure, they were only required to have those first two floors, or maybe even just part of the second floor. But you don't, you, when you're building a parking garage, you build the whole thing at once, because it's a lot more cost-effective. So this is a way for them to recoup a little bit of money while they're waiting for other things at the, at the shopping center to be built, and that will then eventually be parking in all those spots while they're shopping and enjoying the theater and a million other things. And hopefully, spending lots of money and creating sales tax.
Thank you. I'll start off with the first question, which was kind of basically close to Madam Mayor. And I, I got my partial answer, and the intent, when they first built this parking structure, as per your statement, Ms. Tatum, was to address the influx of upcoming retail and additional construction of retail for the future.
Correct.
Okay, so it was never intended in the planned development to allow the storage of new cars, and that's why we were here tonight?
Correct.
You also made mention, number two, that Tesla, anyone can use the spots up on the fifth floor, which is 40 parking spots. Who is anyone, the public or the car dealership wanting to store additional vehicles?
Thank you, I, let me clarify. So, yes, no, the, the spaces identify, or that would have the Tesla charging stations are not for the vehicle storage of the auto dealerships. They would be available to customers of the shopping center.
Okay, so in.
So he could park his Tesla there.
Well, no, no, I, actually, I,
Find your shop.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit upset, because all the charges I've seen has always been on the first floor, on the outskirts. In this particular case, you have to traverse and go all the way going up to the fifth floor. And then when you leave the area, you got to go to two additional floors of just cars. So putting myself as, not a Tesla owner, but someone who is shopping at Cerimani, they're going to go past the second floor, and then they say, oh, my goodness, I can't park up here on the third floor. And then they'll go up to floor number four, I can't park here either. But then when they get up to the fifth floor, they're going to see, okay, well, that's a Tesla charging station, but I can park there.
I'm sure there'll be signage.
That's my question, number, number three. Will they offer signs to tell the public that's generally no public parking with exception of floor number five and 40 limited spaces? I, I, I'm just putting myself as a person shopping in Cerimani.
I'd like to refer that, as you saw from the photos, actually, the dealerships are already parking in those spots, and so I'll have.
That's question number four.
I will turn it over to the applicant if they want to address how they've signed the sites and how they inform the public that the spaces are restricted.
Currently, it is not signed. And we block it off at night, because customers don't go up there. However, they're never blocked from going up there. So we, we could have it signed. Tesla is not built out yet. We're in the midst of doing that now. They're constructing their stalls, and that will all, that will be signed. Tesla customers will know where they can go up there to park. At this moment, we can't get people to park in the garage anyway, so I, I don't think they'll be trying to go up to the fourth and fifth and sixth floor. If they did, they're not banned from parking there. If they have a spot, they have a spot.
We don't police the parking structure to where if there's a potential shopper parking a Nissan stall, it's parked, and we, we don't kick it out.
So in, sorry, so in your agreements, you're saying if there was an empty, like, car slot along the lines of the new vehicles, any car could park there?
They could, yes. And if the dealership had a problem, they would call me, and I'd say, you know?
I, I have another question. The dealerships that are mentioned, how many of them are Daily City dealerships?
We have, the only Nissan is Koma.
Yeah, that's correct. So Mitsubishi, you're probably aware of the Mitsubishi dealerships, the top of the hill, and City Toyota, Nissan's in Koma.
And Nissan's in Koma. How many slots are to Daily City?
About 354.
I, I didn't hear the question.
How many slots are the Daily City dealers?
City Toyota has 354. And Daily City Mitsubishi has 70.
70, okay. Thank you. Any other question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I can continue in my line of questioning. So they said, I heard something about being blocked off at night, but to my understanding, Tesla operates 24/7.
Tesla's not operating yet. As soon as Tesla opens, it will not, it will just, you know, and, and the blocking is like a little barricade. It's not a big block.
Oh, so when Tesla, then it will be open?
Yes.
But there's no reason for anybody to go up there now, because there's no Tesla thing up there?
Right.
Yeah, great.
It's not open for business yet. The stalls aren't up and running.
Okay, question number four. It's my understanding that these vehicles have been parking there since January, and I'm wondering why this is just being brought to city council now for a use permit?
We didn't, I was not aware that we needed a use permit. As soon as we did find out, we immediately contacted the city and started the process. When the dealership came to me and wanted to rent space, and they needed the help, and we had empty spots, that's, we did a temporary license agreement. And as soon as we were aware that we needed a change in use permit, we immediately filed it.
When staff became aware, we did reach out to Regency, and the submission of an application was, in our opinion, timely.
Thank you.
So along those particular lines, being that we're going for a use permit now, is there any sort of retroactive, retroactive for the previous months that they were there that the city can obtain?
Well, we, we didn't open a code enforcement case, so there's no code enforcement penalties. However, when they report their gross receipts on commercial rental, this would be included for the entire fiscal year from January.
Okay.
Right, because it's based on their total receipt, so any rental income they've taken in, including all of their retail tenants, would be combined.
All right, and my last question is basically a comment. Based upon what I've heard thus far in the construction of this lot, and it was not originally planned, I am, I am concerned, even though this is temporary, in granting a five-year use permit. If anybody's been out to Cerimani at Christmas time, it is extremely difficult to move around Cerimani, and it's gotten to a point where I don't even go near Cerimani at Christmas time. We don't know what's going to happen, and to come out and give a five-year use permit, I'm very uncomfortable with that. I would like to reduce that time and see how this plays out with the upcoming construction to happen at Cerimani.
I don't know, my, my experience there is, it goes along with you saying, you can't get people to use a parking garage. At, at Westlake, you cannot get people to use the parking garage. They will not park in the parking garage. They will drive around that, that. They will drive around the, that parking lot, cuss swear, bang on the horn, road rage, but they will not drive up in there. There's plenty of parking spots, but you can't get people to go into the garage. It's some kind of human nature thing or something. I don't know.
It's unfortunate.
I know.
It is.
The only parking garage in the Bay Area where I've seen people eagerly go into is the one at Kaiser, at South San Francisco Kaiser, because they're gonna die if they don't park their car and see the doctor. I mean, that's about the only thing. So I don't, I'm not sure, maybe at the holidays, you know, amp up the temporary signage parking this way. I know other shopping centers do that, and because if people can't park, they're not gonna shop.
And we do have parking-
And I know you've done that in the past.
Yeah, we do, we have big, huge arrows that point through the garage, additional parking here.
Yeah.
So we're encouraging, we've even tried to encourage, actually, our tenants last year to park in the parking structure, and giving them gift cards if they would do so.
During the holiday.
And they wouldn't park there during the holiday.
Oh, we are fickle bees, aren't we?
So we're trying.
What is the ca- like, capacity of usage on a, on a regular basis around those?
The first floor generally has, I mean, it's never full, but, you know, people are parking there.
It's about sixty percent on a, on a, like, on a heavy weekend, the first. Second floor is, you know, you saw the pictures, pretty much like that. Even during the holiday, it was pretty bare like that.
But when we develop, it won't be like that anymore. The future development, that's what we're hoping for.
And these are-
Which was built.
And these, this program for the, all the, the car lots, they're all, it's all temporary. So the five-year, it's temporary now.
Well, I was hoping you wouldn't bring that up, because on this council, we had a similar request to build a parking lot at a area in Daly City. And the developer, even though they were going to completely repave the parking lot and put down asphalt, they wanted a, if I believe, four-year, but they were expending money to do this, and it didn't come to fruition. Here, you already have a parking lot. The money has already been expended, but it was never in the planned development to use it as storage. So, my concern is, you know, we should ensure fairness across the board to everyone, especially in the area of, I just hate to encumber Daly City for five years.
Wasn't it the same company?
No, it was a different company over at the Cow Palace, when they wanted to build the asphalt lot.
It was different?
It was a different company.
I thought it was the same one, wasn't it?
I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, I don't know.
Their own, the, the, the parking lot out in the Bay Shore is owned by Si West.
No, but the people, the company that wanted to park there. Who was that?
I believe that was Cerro Monte Honda. So it was a different, um, uh-
It's a different car dealership, Ms. Christensen.
But what I was bringing up is, even though they were going to repave, we had a lot of conditions on them. You pay to repave, and they wanted a five-year lease to recoup some of the monies to be expended. And we would not give that five-year lease.
Because we wanted to have the opportunity-
For future development.
To develop that.
Yes.
Yeah. And this, the parking's already there, and it won't be used for storage when the future development happens.
Correct, because we must meet our quota then.
Yeah.
And that, and the dealerships already know that.
Then know that right up front. They're just thrilled to get the spots now.
Absolutely, and we're thrilled to help, and, you know, so.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I guess I'm wondering is, why doesn't Daly City have more of an exclusive on those spots for our dealerships? I mean, we're, you were leasing a hundred, looks like a hundred ninety to another dealership outside of Daly City. And I'm wondering, wasn't, was there not a-
We don't have any other dealerships.
A demand from our Daly City dealerships to have more there?
Toyota wanted parking, and we gave it to them. Mitsubishi, anyone who has approached us, we've had the spots.
Right.
Now, if someone approaches us now, of course, we're kind of maxed out.
No, no, I, I understand that. What I'm saying is, why do we, are we allowing Colma dealerships to park there when it should just be Daly City?
No!
That's what I'm asking.
Well, there's only one dealership that wanted to come in there from Colma. We, I haven't gotten any requests from any other dealerships since-
Yeah, part of the problem is-
I guess what I'm asking is, did Daly City want more spots?
No.
Than the three, like, for example, City Toyota, they didn't want any more?
No, City Toyota wanted three hundred spots, and they got three hundred spots.
And, and Cerro Monte is a private business. We can't tell them who to rent their property to. I'm just appreciative that you supported our dealerships with everything that they wanted.
Councilmember Christensen, I think Vice Mayor wasn't finished, so if you can kindly wait your turn.
Yeah, so-
Well, I'd like to wrap it up.
Councilmember Sylvester's question about the term of the five years. Why couldn't we have a shorter term and then renew it if we thought things are not progressing? And, I mean, what's the harm in doing that?
There, there is absolutely no harm in that. It's at the council's discretion, staff throughout five years, particularly because in this case, we do still have conversations with representatives from Regency and know that they're actively pursuing development. This is just simply to give five years so that we don't have to, you know, revisit it after a couple of years, should development still be in the pipeline. But it is absolutely at the council's discretion, and I don't know if the applicant would like to talk about what their, not necessarily the lease terms, but the lease durations. I know that they're able to terminate leases very quickly.
Two of the license agreements can be terminated immediately. Of course, we would give them thirty for, you know, sixty days, we would like to do that. And the other is thirty. And they're all fully aware that, should it be necessary, or should we not obtain this permit, that, you know, they won't be able to park there anymore. But they're on a, a license agreement, which is always temporary, nothing is permanent.
So it's an eleven-month term?
Well, actually, one is only on a six-month, so.
Okay.
So the use permit is for the five years, but the Nissan and all of them are under a year.
I see, okay. Okay, that's all.
Councilmember Christensen, do, do you have a comment?
No, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the use permit.
Any other discussion, if not roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
No.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number twelve. Appropriate funds and award construction contract for the Hickey Boulevard Campus Drive Crosswalk Improvements Project. And we have, Mrs. Chan?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Staff is requesting the approval of the construction contract for the Hickey Boulevard Campus Drive Crosswalk Improvements Project. Staff further recommends that the City Council approve the design documents, affirm the sequent termination of categorical exemption, and appropriate an additional one hundred thousand dollars of AB sixteen hundred developer impact fees for transportation improvements to fully fund the project. In May two thousand seventeen, Jefferson Union High School District approved the construction of a new Summit Shasta Charter High School facility on Campus Drive with vehicle access from Hickey Boulevard. Once the new school opens, there will be an increase in pedestrian traffic across Hickey Boulevard. This project will modify the existing traffic signal at the intersection to include new pedestrian phase across Hickey Boulevard, install new ADA curb ramps, and new sidewalk on the south side of Hickey Boulevard for the relocated Samtrans bus stop. As a condition of approval, the school district, or the school was required to contribute fifty thousand dollars towards the proposed improvements. The engineer's estimate for the project was a hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. On July second, we received four bids for the project, ranging from a low of approximately a hundred thirty-six thousand to a high of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. We are requesting that the City Council accept all bids received and award a construction contract to Columbia Electric in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety cents. The full cost of the project with design, contingency, administrative costs is approxi- approximately two hundred twenty thousand. An additional one hundred thousand above the previously appropriated seventy thousand is required to fully fund the construction portion of the project. Staff is available to answer any questions the council may have.
Ms. Chan, at this moment, does any of my colleagues have questions for staff?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Ms. Chan, I think, I, I didn't see it here in the staff report, but you made mention of it. This is a project for the Jefferson Union High School District to build a new charter school.
Is it improvement that we proposed when they came to us about their new school?
And and will they, you said they will be putting in fifty thousand dollars towards the cost of these improvements?
Yes, they've already done that.
Okay, and, see, what I'm alluding to is, when other developers come into Daly City, we, we ask the developers to mitigate any issues. Say, for instance, new traffic signs, and in this case, traffic signal, ADA ramps, that they pay for these additional items. I'm just wondering why the school district did not take this into consideration instead of Daly City having to bear the cost of all these improvements?
Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes.
The improvements proposed as a requirement on the school district, their contribution of fifty thousand dollars is what we attribute for their portion of, of the benefit. The city also benefits from the crosswalks in terms of other uses at that facility, also for the relocated bus stop. So based on the analysis of, you know, the four hundred additional students for the school, and in addition to the, to the ben- a public benefit for the city, we attributed fifty thousand dollars for the school district as their fair share.
Sir, that is a good answer. Because I, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm wondering if the school was not there, what I'm hearing from you is, we still need some improvements in that area, whether the school is there or not, and that's what I'm hearing.
That's correct.
That's an excellent answer, thank you, you answered my question.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, as their motion to adopt this appropriation of funds for the construction contract for Hickey Boulevard Campus Drive Crosswalks Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. At this point, it's public appearances and oral communications, and we have one card at the moment, Ms. Pamela Di Giovanni.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. The Chief, Patrick Gensley. And this week has been hard on the staff here and our interim city manager, attending the services, and our council member Sylvester, Vice Mayor Mayor, have been through it, and we're there for support. So we know that Sergeant Alex, I know you're gonna be speaking on that, attending the services, but it's kind of like overwhelming, is I'm gonna give you a perspective as a community member, and seeing that sea, where we even had our firefighters, and how interconnected they are. And from a human aspect of Alex's life, it was a testament to how much he was loved. And remember, when they're in a uniform, they still have family, they still have friends, and they still have lives. And that interacts and communicates throughout our life. Even seeing him in a parking lot, and him telling me, joking around that I don't need to wear high heels because I'm too short. And then, you know, he, I said, you have such a smile that, that how can you go arrest someone because you have such a big heart? You're not gonna be able to wipe that smile off your face when you arrest anyone. So these things that transcend throughout our city, it's with heavy heart. And now we also found out, as you know, that our former fire chief, who has a son that's a police officer, this week, he has passed as well. So I know you're only speaking to that, and you'll be speaking how people can donate and help the family of Sergeant Alex, because they need, they need help now. And how we can donate and drop chucks off, no matter the amount, how small it is, five dollars, ten dollars, because he was gone too soon at the age of forty-three. And to all of them, it's with heavy heart, but I know that we are really proud, and we have some of the best. And all of them, their cities may say something different, a San Francisco, Berlin game, but they're all loved, and we love them all, and respect them, and know that they're giving their lives every single day, our police and our fire. So thanks for being there for them. I thank the chief, I thank Lee from the POA, and everyone. So we know that we, they're, they're totally loved and respected, and the staff here, they, it's hard. It's very hard, so thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, if there are no other public comments, we'll be moving on to appointments, board commission memberships, or any committee appointments. Seeing none, we're moving on to item number thirteen, council committee reports. And on the dates of July nine to July twenty-third, we did have a development committee, which talked about the former redevelopment parcels, and getting, we got an update from staff regarding these particular developments around the hotel development that was mentioned earlier by Vice Mayor, and also an update on that. We also had an update on the parcel where Du- in front of Dugan's, and on the adjacent side of it. So we got an update on that as well. And, and basically, we also looked at other hotel developments alongside Cerro Monte Boulevard, where there's also proposed either condominiums or rental housing by the McDonald's area on the left side called Sarah Commons, as well as what was mentioned earlier with Cerro Monte. For those of you that don't know, they are talking about some, another phase in their development. And, and that's what was probably the concern around making sure those are conditional use permits for those parking areas, because there is a proposed hotel on the side of where Denny's is in the future. And staff has stated that they are still looking to, Regency is still looking to develop that hotel in the near future, and have been talking to some hotel owners, or actually, some hotel providers, but they can't disclose anything at that moment. And Councilmember Sylvester, is there anything else? So for those of you on, on that, in the audience and watching, the development committee consists of myself and Councilmember Sylvester. Our staff was there to present as Ms. Mottby and Ms. Zimmerman, as well as Ms. Motherhead at that meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I concur with your full and complete statement and update regarding redevelopment. I would first like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part, and also for the work that staff has done. It definitely brings about a greater transparency as to what's happening in our city and what's going to happen in the future. And I, I feel really more informed at this particular time. Now, uh- Now, to address, to advise my colleagues on camp, on council, I just want to provide an update, and that's the E and A exclusive negotiating agreement that we had with one of the hotels. Apparently, they have not signed it yet. So we've given them some more time to kind of light the fire and get it done, and we hope if they don't, we'll probably have to go out again and look. But we're lighting a fire. If we give you an E and A, we hope to have language drafted, and the city attorney can probably add on to this in the future. Hey, don't just hold on to this, you better move on it. So we'll put some time limits on it. But I, I've definitely learned a lot as a result of being a part and getting an update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additions from staff? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to city council reports, any reports? Councilmember Sylvester?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request. Council approved the additional purchase of ALPR, Automated License Plate Readers. And I would like to obtain an update as to how that's working for us here in Daily City. Also, I've read some information that malls are installing these units, and subsequently, the license plates that they capture is being shared with the federal government in immigration to track plates. So I'm just wondering about who accesses our data information. So first of all, how it's being used and who has access to the data that we receive. The second issue I would like to bring up is our Arts and Culture Commission has been doing a fabulous job in getting artists recognized. Upstairs, you will know this, if you do know this, all the art has changed. The last artist, basically, most, if not all of his pieces were sold. So I'd like to give kudos to the Arts and Culture Commission for constantly moving forward and looking for artists to display their wares. But with that being said, it does come with a cost. I've also learned that whenever they have these events for the arts and culture, I brought this up before, they, basically, the commissioners have been expending their own money and resources to get hors d'oeuvres and wine and et cetera for those who come for the grand opening of the art exhibits. I would like to propose that the Arts and Culture Commission be given a stipend to be kept in an account for them of, say, maybe starting off of a thousand dollars minimum per year. And they're to use those funds for opening events, or maybe two hundred and fifty dollars per event. But I think if you put a thousand dollars and you got one year to use it, they would probably be more frugal in how it's spent. We, we need to give support for our commissions to let them know, hey, we really enjoy the work that you're doing. So if we can maybe put that to be considered sometime in the future, I think not only that, the Arts and Culture Commission will appreciate it, and of course, maybe putting some, this is to come later, I'm going to ask this again later on, to recognize the artists that we have had in the past, either on our social media or our website. The month of June two thousand eighteen, we had this particular artist, so that the people of Daily City can reach out to these folks and say, you know, I really like your pieces, do you have any more? Just to maintain the historical perspective as to what we have. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Sylvester, I, I do say when you do walk around or drive around Daily City and see those electric boxes painted with, you know, it's not just kind of a green color or beige color, but you see artwork from young students from Skyline College, and that collaborative effort that was done from our Arts and Culture Commissor, Commission is great. And yeah, you'll see them everywhere, you'll see them around Geller, you'll see them by the Daily City Bart Station, you'll see them by In-N-Out. So it's really great. Oh, now everyone knows my favorite place. I'll just say that's the little baby in my tummy. But also, it, it's really wonderful to see, and we should definitely support the Arts and Culture Commission. I do want to mention that I, I was able to speak at a scholarship event for PG&E, and a lot of the high school students were from Jefferson High School and Westmore, and these were scholars that I were, was able to speak to, and it was really inspiring. As mentioned, one of the most favorite things I, I, I love to see is young people and hearing their stories and their perseverance, and really, they are the future. And also, wanted to talk about and ask also staff if we could look into our minimum wage. We actually had, we've, we've talked about this in the past, we've had a study session, and really, important to see this on here, as I hear from many that, of our residents that are just really trying to survive with kind of the larger economic kind of burden of rental housing, I think it's also in line with that, and if we can do a follow-up on that as soon as possible. Also, there was an article and also press release around Seaton Hospital, and if we can get further information about what's going on, you know, Seaton Hospital continues to be our community hospital here in Daily City, and I just want to get more information on, on that as well. And something also came to my attention, I don't know if we can work on this. Recently, in the past month or so, there have been increasingly anti-immigrant and racial slurs that have happened through social media, and I think, you know, our community needs an outlet to be able to voice their, just how they feel, but also in a positive manner. And if we can find some dates to create possibly an event like a Unity Jam where we celebrate our cultural diversity and be able to express that in Daily City, we do not condone, you know, any of these anti-immigrant and racial slurs or anti, in, on our community. And I, I think that if we can host it here at City Hall, it does, you know, and an afternoon of music and celebration, which, you know, we have amazing culture of dance and everything, and just give these people an opportunity to, to voice their concerns, and also to state that this is not, this is not what Daily City is, and that's a small percentage of, of maybe people that feel that way, but we are a community that loves, we're a community that unites, and we are a community that celebrates diversity. And then we can work on, on some of that. Also, last but not least, one of the items I do want to talk about is, which we will be concluding, is I was able to go to the viewing of our sergeant on, on Sunday, and it was really, really sad to see such a great person suddenly pass away, but the love that you saw, how many people were there at the church, and just the extension of people waiting to see his family and him was, is definitely something that the community from all over where he was raised and also the community here in Daily City showed support, and I just want to extend that, you know, the city of Daily City is a community that cares for one another, and for all the staff that has been hit immediately from this, that know that, you know, we are here together. And it is, has been a very sad day and sad time for our community. So at this point, if there's any staff reports? We will adjourn tonight's council meeting in the memory of the following. Sergeant Alex Rolder, Rolder. Alex proudly served his country in the United States Marine Corps before beginning his law enforcement career with the San Bruno Police Department in nineteen ninety-nine. In two thousand three, Alex came to work for the Daily City Police Department. With the Daily City Police Department, Alex served as a patrol officer, field training officer, detective, and SWAT member. Alex promoted, was promoted to sergeant in two thousand eleven and supervised a crime suppression unit, and most recently served in the patrol division. Also, we will adjourn in memory of retired Deputy Fire Chief Don Cucci? 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 Chucci?
Yes, that's it? You got it.
Who passed away in July twenty-first. Don began his fire service in Daily City as a firefighter in nineteen seventy-nine. He promoted through the ranks, retiring in two thousand five as a deputy fire chief with the North County Fire Tor- Authority. Upon retirement, he continued his passion of teaching and mentoring prospective firefighters while teaching fire technology at the College of San Mateo. He also spent decades on the Board of Operation Santa Claus overseeing toy collection and distribution to thousands of children in need. Of course, Vice Mayor.
I wanted to say something about Sergeant Alex Rolder. So Sergeant R- Rolder was, to me, one of the nicest, kindest police officers I have ever had the privilege to know. He was someone that, he just, he seemed to always have a permanent smile on, on his face. He's always, he's always seemed to be very happy and, and approachable, and, and I, I had, before I was on the council, I had, I had met with him several times in the courtroom, and, and as a defense attorney, he was, you know, he was always still a gentleman to me, and, and I appreciated that so much, because from the moment I met him, I just, I, I knew he was a good man. And so we lost a very great community servant, and Daily City, it's, it's a really sad day. And then also for the, the father of Officer Tucci, I've heard really great things about him, I've not had the opportunity to meet him, but this clearly is a sad month for us, and God bless them both.
May we all have a, a moment of silence as we adjourn in their memory?